Good afternoon and welcome. I'd like to begin by asking our clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman Curtis?
Present.
Vice Mayor Gray?
Present.
Councilman Hobbs?
Present.
Councilwoman Steve?
Present.
Mayor Tuck?
Present. I want to begin by acknowledging that we have Assistant City Manager Steve Bond, who's sitting in for our City Manager Mary Bunny, who's on travel, and would like to call on Mr. Bond to introduce our agenda for this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item that we have is the briefing on the Interstate 64 Regional Express Lane Concepts. We have Christopher G. Hall from the Virginia Department of Transportation, Hampton Roads District Engineer, as a presenter, and also Robert A. Crum, who is with the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. This briefing is to provide an overview of some of the configurations for the express and the high occupancy toll lanes, or hot lanes, on Interstate 64 and their impact on traffic. There are various options that are under consideration, and the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization is scheduled to endorse an express lane option by the end of the year. This is just a briefing and doesn't really require any council action.
Thank you, Mayor Tuck, council members. It's my pleasure to be here this afternoon and appreciate the opportunity to share some information with the Hampton City Council and your residents and viewers on our proposed regional express lanes network. Again, my name is Bob Crum. I'm the Executive Director of the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. We are the entity that brings together the 17 localities within the Hampton Roads region and brings them together to deliberate issues of importance, regional importance, in this particular case, issues related to our regional transportation network. I'm joined today by, as was mentioned, Chris Hall, who is the district administrator, your district administrator with the Virginia Department of Transportation. I would also like to introduce my colleague, Mr. Kevin Page, that I know everybody is very familiar with, of the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission. Before we begin, I just think it's important to stress the relationship and collaboration that we're seeing between our region and these three organizations. The organization that I work for, we're responsible for identifying needed projects, planning for those projects, prioritizing those projects, and setting any policy that is necessary to get those projects implemented. We then turn those projects over to Mr. Page and H.R. Tac, who puts comprehensive financing plans around those projects to pay for them and move them to construction. Most of the projects that we're going to talk about today are being delivered with your local regional tax dollars. You're probably aware in Hampton Roads that we have a little extra gas tax and a little extra sales and use tax that generates money that's being put on these regional priority projects. That's done through H.R. Tac. And then VDOT, and you'll hear from Mr. Hall in a few minutes, VDOT is our project administrator that manages the construction of those projects. With that collaboration, this is really a historical time for Hampton Roads. We have over $5 billion of transportation projects, all highway projects on the interstate highway system that are either under construction or will be complete by 2025. Those include, just for everybody to have a good level set of information, they're happening all around us, but they begin on the peninsula on Interstate 64. Two segments of Interstate 64 complete, with the third under construction that takes us just west of Williamsburg. If you go to the south side, you see two 64-64 interchange, under construction, going to Virginia Beach. The first phase was completed last month, so when you're coming from Indian River, it's a little easier to make that exit now. The next phase will be completed in about 18 months. High-Rise Bridge in 64 South Side is currently under construction as well, a critical project for us. And of course, a project that's really critical to our conversation today is the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. $3.8 billion, the largest project in the history of Virginia, that will be completed by the end of 2025. So, really good news. But what we've been really trying to study at the regional level, and I want to pause and say, the leadership exhibited by your mayor at the regional level in helping us understand the issues, and Mr. Gray, Mr. Bond, Ms. Bunny, you're so well represented at the regional level. And I want to thank you all for helping us understand issues in Hampton so we can come to the best solution for everybody that's going to be impacted by these projects. But when we're investing over $5 billion of our projects, I think two goals that we really want to sit back, many goals, but two things we want to be certain. Number one, how do we make those projects work best together as a network, as a system, right? And how do we do that in a way that's most beneficial to your constituents, your residents, and the residents in Hampton Roads? So that's what we'd like to share some information with, for you today. And it really opens up the conversation around this concept of a regional express lanes network. So this conversation goes back to our July regional board meeting, where our staff was asked a very important question. Our staff was asked by the TPO board, what would happen if we would go building all these regional priority projects with free general-purpose lanes? All general-purpose lanes, no tolling? And what would be the, calling that the baseline, what would that look like in the year 2045? And how would that compare to if we did a network that used high occupancy toll lanes? And what they really were interested in is coming up with the best regional network that would move traffic as efficiently around our region as possible. And I know many of you are aware with this, but I'd like to start with just a real quick graphic that talks about the difference between something we're familiar with now, which are those HOV2, high occupancy vehicle two lanes, and hot two lanes. So, as you come down the peninsula, and as I'm heading east, and I come down the peninsula near Jefferson, of course I have the HOVs now, I can only jump into those during the peak traffic period, about two hours during the time, peak time coming east, I can only jump into those when it's me and another person or more in my vehicle. If we go to hot lanes, high occupancy two lanes, we actually give increased opportunity to ride in those lanes. Not only can I jump over there and ride the lanes if it's me and another person in the car and ride free, I also have the ability, if it's just me in the car and I don't mind paying a modest toll, I can jump in there and use it, okay? So what we found, and we found this on the south side too, our HOV2 lanes just weren't used that much. And HOV3 are used even less, right? So going with the high occupancy toll lanes, what we found is it is increasing the usage of that pavement. And really what this is all about is how do we maximize the use of our pavement as much as we can? So we looked at an option, looking out to 2045, that said, what would happen if we do no managed lanes, and what might that look like? All general-purpose lanes, starting at Jefferson, going down through the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, going down on the south side to the reversible section, past 264-64, and going through the High-Rise Bridge out to Bowers Hill. And we did some modeling on what that would look like. Now, on the south side, you're probably aware, if I may, on this map, we do have a reversible segment there. What we have is existing hot lanes, high occupancy toll lanes. They flow towards the military base in the morning, and they flow from the military base towards Chesapeake in the evening peak period, okay? So that was a given in looking at our, at our network. But we wanted to see how the use of free lanes would compare to a system that had managed hot lanes. Now, as we did that, the one thing that was important for us to recognize, if we look out to 2040, we are projecting we're going to see a 20% increase in traffic. So that's, you know, obviously, you think about the HRBT today, and think about adding 20,000 new cars going through there every day with you. But we wanted to be able to project that increase of traffic into our model and see what these two options would provide for us. So we took a look at what that would look like. And let's see, I'm sorry. So, and here's what we found. I apologize. So if you do the general-purpose lanes, what these two maps show you is a side-by-side comparison. And let me show you what we're looking at here. We're showing how different segments will flow under something we call Level of Service. So in Level of Service, A to C, which is pretty acceptable, shows up in green. Yellow is Level Service D. Orange is E, and F is Failure, it's red. So what you're looking for is as much green and yellow on this map as possible, which indicates traffic mobility. And when it starts turning red and orange, it starts to show we're going to have some congestion problems. As you can see, if we go all general-purpose lanes with our traffic, we just can't build our way out of congestion. What that's showing is that when you get out near 2040, the approach coming down the peninsula is going to be failing. You're going to have Level Service D at best on the approach, going past the segment we're looking at right out the window, coming down past Settlers Landing. Through the HRBT, it fails. And we barely avoid failure. We're at Level Service E as we go to the south side. It doesn't start lightening, lighting up, and this is the AM peak period, until you get down to Greenbrier and start headed down to Bowers Hill. What our analysis showed though is, and let me stop a second, what's concerning about that is we know we have two major constraints. There's more than that, but two big ones. Number one, we just don't have enough right-of-way to continue to build more general-purpose lanes. And I think you all know that better than anybody. Coming down through Hampton, we have the Critical Property of Hampton University and Emancipation Oak. We have the very important cemetery property. There's not a lot of right-of-way there at all. And the mayor, I know, knows that better than us. He's, he's been measuring and keeping an eye on us, that what we're proposing, we can fit in that right-of-way, and we appreciate that. And likewise, when we jump to the south side, you have Willoughby Spit, a neighborhood that's very concerned about right-of-way acquisition. And then you have the military. We just can't go too wide past the military. On top of that, Mr. Page would tell you that we have fully allocated all of our money to do these $5 billion of projects. So if this being the case, that these are all the general-purpose lanes we can fit in there, what we're showing on the managed lane scenario is if we keep a managed hot lane, we can always guarantee a free-flow trip around that system, the whole way around the Bowers Hill. And there's an update on that that I'll share at the end, Mayor, about a more recent vision of what that might eventually evolve to. The hot lane would be a dynamic toll lane. The toll would be structured based on the amount of traffic using the general-purpose lanes to encourage people to move over and use the hot lane as much as possible to open up mobility in the general-purpose lane. So it would give me the ability, if I'm a single rider, if I don't mind paying the toll, I could move over and use the hot lane. Anybody that has two or more people in the vehicle could also move over and use the hot lane. And by doing that, what we're finding is, and remember, for every person we can get to move over and use the hot lane, it frees up traffic movement for people that want to stay in the free general-purpose lane. So what we're trying to do is dynamic tolling to manage this as a system and get the most throughput for the available lane miles that we can build in this area. The same thing we're finding happens in the PM. As we start to head from Bowers Hill through the High-Rise Bridge, if we do all general-purpose lanes, we don't do any better than Failure or E. So as you see, we're all orange, we're all red. If we can go with this managed lane, now what you start to see is not only do you free up mobility in certain sections, but again, we can ensure a guaranteed trip of at least 45 miles an hour, possibly 50 miles an hour around that beltway system. The other thing that's important to remember too, is, and my friends from HRT are here, that the managed system, the managed lanes, the buses can also use them. Suddenly, the bus trip, where we can guarantee, Mr. Harrell, a 50 mile an hour trip around that network becomes very competitive, and we can encourage the use of transit to moose people in our region as well, which we think is very helpful. So this is, what I asked our staff to do is, let's show something I think we can all relate to. Level service is hard to really, sometimes it's hard for me to wrap my mind around. So what I think is a better thing to look at is, let's look at time of travel. So this is the morning, and how much time it would take to go nine miles between Settlers Landing and 564, okay? If we use general-purpose lanes, whoops, my fly-in's not working, and I apologize for If we use general-purpose lanes, what we're seeing is that the average trip to go from Settlers Landing to 564 is going to take 29 minutes, which means you'll go about 19 miles an hour. If we, if you can provide hot lanes and you can jump in the hot lane, we can guarantee that trip to be 12 minutes. And that, it goes out to the year 2040. So even after we put all that growth into the system, the 20% growth in traffic, what the modeling is showing is the high occupancy toll lanes are going to provide the best option for, for mobility. And as you can see, just in that trip from Settlers Landing to 564, it's going to save you 17 minutes on that trip. The same way in the evening, again, coming back the other way. So you're coming home, you're coming from 564 to Settlers, what we're seeing is general-purpose lanes would be about 28 minutes if we did all general-purpose lanes. Because, and you see it across the country, we just can't build our way out of congestion, right? But if we go the managed lanes, the high occupancy toll lanes, that trip, we can guarantee in the hot lane, a 12-minute trip again at 45 miles an hour. So that's where we really think that we're starting to see some benefit. We did, with the ability of our model, we were really interested to know, what would the impact be of these hot lanes to local roadways in Hampton? And we took a look at some road locations, because what we were interested in seeing is, we wanted to make certain that people weren't getting off and cutting through, as you're dealing with today. What our analysis showed is that the impact to local roadways in both Hampton and Norfolk, it does not appear that the hot lanes will induce additional traffic through your city. So we thought that was a positive conclusion. We didn't know going in. We wanted to take a quick look at that for you. But we're finding that in both Hampton and again in Norfolk, we're not seeing cut-through from our modeling by using the hot lanes. And I think by and large, that's because, you know, you're providing a guaranteed trip. So, real quick, looking out to 2040, what we're finding is, if we go all general-purpose free lanes, we're going to have severe congestion. That if we can do the managed lanes, that we can provide for that reliable trip, that the time savings, just going from 564 to Settlers, you're saving about 16 minutes on that trip. 28 minutes in general-purpose lanes, 12 minutes in the hot lanes. And we're also finding that the managed lanes do not have impact to our local roadways. Now, before I move forward and have Mr. Hall come up, I'd just like to update you on a conversation that we had just in the past two weeks, an important policy statement made by our board this past Thursday. By the end of the year, Mr. Page's organization, the H.R. Tac and VDOT, are going to have to enter into a comprehensive tolling agreement related to these hot lanes and related to the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel project. We have been through a series of meetings as we try to deliberate regional issues and establish important positions on critical things that have to go into that agreement. And one of those meetings was our two boards meeting in joint session just this past Thursday. At Thursday's meeting, our 49 elected officials sitting around the table made some important statements as a region. First statement was, if we're going to have express lanes, that those express lanes would be managed and potentially operated by your local elected officials through H.R. Tac. Our region felt incredibly strongly that this shouldn't be something that is, we have a great partnership with VDOT, but this is something that we want to be able to have with our local elected officials' input on, you know, what's, a good question that I'm sure you're going to ask, what, what could the toll be? We think that the local elected officials need to make those decisions on what those toll levels are, and that that's critically important. The second thing that the board said was, Mayor Tuck raised some really important considerations. Initially, we were looking at a hot network where you would start to enter into the hot lanes around Settlers and LaSalle, right? To get, start to get queued up as you go through the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. But Mayor Tuck raised a concern, and he was exactly right. When we looked at the modeling, and it starts to make sense, so you're weaving and merging to get in and out of those hot lanes, what we found is if you do it too close to Settlers and the HRBT, it actually causes more congestion. That's why we moved the entry point back to Jefferson. That allows people, if they want to start getting in the hot lane, to get ready to go across the water, they can do it as far back as Jefferson. There will be a couple of places on the way where they can get in and out, but allows them to start, get lining up to go through the HRBT. Not only did our region support the hot lane network starting at Jefferson, but the region endorsed that hot lane network continuing around the loop through HRBT, down past 264, going past Greenbrier, through the High-Rise Bridge, Bowers Hill, and even someday coming back up around through the Monterey Merrimack and coming back to the Coliseum. Because what our regional officials said is, if we're going to do this correctly, it's got to be a regional network. It shouldn't be hot lanes in one city and not another, that it should be a cohesive network that we manage appropriately, based on what the traffic conditions are at any given point in time.
Mr. Crum, on the hot lanes picking up at Jefferson, heading east, you said there would be a couple of places where you can get in and out. Would there be an exit for 664? And since you have two hot lanes, I mean, would that, what would that exit look like? Is that a, something that crosses over the general-purpose lanes, or is there a different way to get in and out to get on the 564 at that site?
Yes. Yes, sir. Mayor Tuck, Mr. Gray, excellent, excellent question. It really is a great segue to Mr. Hall, who's going to have some very good photos for you up here, that's going to show you exactly where, where those, those items happen. Before I ask if Chris could come up, I did want to, Mr. Gray, if I may, and Mayor Tuck, one more thing I wanted to mention related to our policy statement last Thursday, before I queue it up for Mr. Hall to answer those questions. The other thing that our regional board said is that they want the hot lane system, the express lane systems, managed in the way that has the least impact to Hampton Roads residents, including looking at the possibility of maximizing toll revenues on weekends. So what that means is, so I'm from Pennsylvania, I have a lot of relatives that want to go to the beach, and they tend to all have more than two people in their automobile, right? So the concern was, on weekends, if we have everybody coming down to tourists and they're not paying the toll, that could have a negative impact on your residents, right? So one of the things that our board asked H.R. Tac to look at with VDOT is, what does a toll mechanism look like on weekends? Because in Hampton Roads, as you're very well aware, our peak periods are different. It's just not that business day, right? It's Friday, it's Saturday, it's Sunday. And there could be a way to maximize toll collection that has a lower impact on residents if we think it's appropriate and maybe more of that burden being shared with our visitors, tourists visiting the community. Mayor, I'm going to remain for questions, but I think that Mr. Hall really can respond to some of Mr. Gray's question about what that, what that segment looks like, so.
That's fine, thank you.
While they're bringing this up, Mayor Tuck, members of the council, thanks. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon and to bring you up to speed on some of the work we've been doing. As Mr. Crum alluded, you know, we've been really tied at the hip with the region on, what does the region want to do, what direction do they want to go, in providing the best engineering analysis and, and options to help the region make the best decision. What I'm going to be talking about here this afternoon is really, Mr. Crum gave you a very good overview of the entire network, all the way around to Bowers Hill. I'm going to be focusing in on really the peninsula, and then more specifically, the portion of the network that really runs through the Hampton region. We did a number of runs in terms of analysis and development of different courses of action to try and get to what is the optimum solution. We took those and we did an analysis of the AM and PM peak volume traffic to determine what do those various options look like in terms of lane configuration and, and how we would situate the, the high occupancy toll lanes. And then basically what this did is that we identified five friction points throughout the entire network. And I'm going to address one of those, which is here in Hampton Roads, which we're all familiar with. I am a citizen of Hampton, I'm familiar with, and those are the, the area basically from Mercury down to the entrance to the tunnel there, in the vicinity of Settlers Landing and Mallory. So we're going to take a look at what that, what our proposed scenario looks like in terms of what that optimum solution is. We're going to go through, what, what does the performance of that proposed scenario look like in terms of speed and reliability in, again, in those AM and peak periods? And then I'm going to take a little bit of a chance to look at specifically the hotspot here in Hampton, and then we'll talk a little bit about what the next steps are. And again, Mr. Crum alluded to some of those at the end of his presentation, but, you know, where do we go from here in terms of decisions that the region needs to make? So first, just as Mr. Crum alluded to, we were asked to take a look at what would the network look like if we started up in vicinity of Jefferson interchange, all the way down, in terms of the peninsula, all the way down to the entrance to the HRBT. The, the scenario that we're looking at, that optimum scenario, again, is essentially we would convert the current HOV2 facility to an HOT2 facility, and that would run from Jefferson all the way down to where that current, those current HOV lanes end, right around the Mercury Interchange. And that first profile up there on the upper left just shows what that cross-section would look like in, in sort of general terms. And a couple of things I want to explain about this is, you'll hear the term "bollards" separated, and what that means is, you do have a, you would have a separated facility to where there would be a very discreet distinction on what is a, what's the hot lane and what's the general-purpose lane. And bollards are similar to what you all have put in here, right out there at the Settlers Landing area, right at the entrance to Hampton University. Those plastic delineator things you can drive over if we have an emergency issue. But essentially, that's to, again, to segment traffic and try and normalize traffic. So between Mercury and LaSalle, and I'll go into this in a lot more detail in the next couple slides, basically, you know, we have a, we carry that single-lane, high occupancy toll facility all the way through to LaSalle. And then the, the difference here is, we will, we'll begin a widening project right around the Riprap Landing area, and we'll be, we'll be potentially doing some, some things to taper into that further to the, to the west, but essentially, we would generate a, a four-lane profile in both the eastbound and westbound directions to facilitate traffic through that critical choke point area that, that we're all familiar with, basically from, from Mercury, LaSalle interchange area, all the way down to the, to the Bridge Tunnel. Now, I want to, I want to get into this in a lot more detail, and I apologize if you can't see the graphics. I do have the roll plots. If you, you all have more specific questions, you're not getting what you need from this. But what we're going to generally do here is, I'm going to walk you through from east to west, and then from west to east, what the system looks like, the proposed concept would look like as we travel through the Hampton region. So we're starting here at Hampton Road and Center Parkway here. We're coming eastbound into, into Hampton, okay? And we have this profile here, we have that barrier-separated profile, where you have three general-purpose lanes and one high occupancy toll lane, hot lane, that would be carried through, all the way through this area. So again, you're separated, that traffic's normalized from points So again, you're separated, that traffic's normalized from points further to the west, and we're coming into the Mercury Interchange. Right past the Mercury, or past the, where, this is McGruder comes in here. We'll open up the system, so this gets, I believe, to Mr. Gray's question, where we'll have a point of where those folks that are coming in from McGruder will have access into the hot network at this point. So that's kind of what this reflects down here, where you have an open section. What I mean an open section, we don't have the ballards in there anymore, and that would allow traffic to merge or diverge in and out of the hot, hot network at that point. As we move further to the east, you see the little hatch lines here that indicates you have an open system. And again, that would, that would be delineated by rumble strips and paint, but essentially, it would allow motorists to weave into and exit out of the hot network at this point if they wanted to get off at Mercury, or prepare to merge off onto 664, as we're coming through the Mercury Interchange here. Okay, and we carry that, going eastbound, we carry that cross-section all the way through as we're approaching now the 664 interchange. Again, this will be, all be an open section to accommodate folks to be able to get into and out of the hot network. Now, as we come into the 664 interchange, we're going to close, we're going to close the network back up, and now we go into, again, back into that ballard separated area through here, okay? As we come into underneath and through the 664 interchange, now we're approaching LaSalle. And we have a closed system at this point, okay? We have a closed system at this point. And when we come past, now we're coming through and past LaSalle in the eastbound direction, we still have that separated system to normalize. Again, the idea is to normalize traffic through this area, and I'm going to show you a simulation that kind of shows how that's going to work. And then as we get further past LaSalle, we're past the King Street Riprap Road ramp there, and we're approaching, we're approaching King Street. Now is where we're going to start that widening effort, and we're going to open it up to a four-lane cross-section, both in the eastbound and westbound direction. And we, we basically developed this, what we call a choice entry, okay? So you're coming now, if you're in the general purpose lanes through this area, you know, you don't have the option to get into the hot network. Now you have the ability to get into the hot work, hot network, we've generated that additional access point, again, to service folks that are coming from 664 northbound and want to get on to, get into the network, traveling eastbound, or from LaSalle, that's, or Mercury, that's where they can enter. And then we carry this cross-section, this is a, two lanes in the hot network and two lanes in the general purpose. We carry that all the way through, over the Hampton River Bridges, right out here, through the Settlers Landing interchange, and then to the entrance to the, to the bridge tunnel. And then in the, in the eastbound direction, those four lanes of traffic would be carried by the two new facilities that we're going to be constructing here. So now moving in the westbound direction, we're starting here, we're moving in the westbound direction. We have that two-by-two cross-section, will be ballards separated, coming out of the And essentially, we'll, we'll open that up right just past the Settlers Landing, westbound exit ramp there, so that I allow people to get out of the network and into the general purpose lanes. And we will carry that open section, those will be, we'll carry that, that four-lane profile, two in the hot network and two in the general purpose, all the way over the Hampton River Bridges. And then that will essentially end right here. We'll taper it back down to the one lane in the, in the hot system, two lanes in the general purpose, then we'll link up with the system as we travel further to the, to the west. Again, coming through LaSalle, through 664, this is all open, so folks can get into it if they're traveling further to the west up the peninsula. And then this is where we close it back up, just past the Mercury ramp there. Now, as we, I don't have the, further up the peninsula here, but, you know, we're looking at other options to, you know, folks want to get into it further on up, you know, around the J. Clyde Morris area, there's going to be probably two more entrance and egress points further up the peninsula as you're traveling west. Now, the next thing I'd like to show you is how, so how did this, how did this perform? What this graphic shows is basically, across the top are those peak, those peak periods. And this, this chart shows how the system performs in the, in the AM peak period in the eastbound direction. And on the left-hand side there, you have the location, so we're starting up here at Fort Eustis Boulevard, we're moving east. As you move down the chart, across the top, as you're, you know, we're starting early in the morning here, and we're moving towards 8:30 at the end of our peak period. And then over here, we're at 664 now, and we're moving further to the east, across, through the tunnel and into the south side. So this, the colors delineate the speed. So obviously, the darker the red, the slower you go, the darker the green, the faster you're going. And the point of this chart is really to show that you have free-flow conditions now in the eastbound direction, in the peak period in the AM. Now, this is for, this analysis was done for the 2025 horizon. So this is in the year 2025, essentially at the opening of the, of the tunnel and the high-rise bridge. You know, we wanted to make sure that we had, A, full connectivity, and we had the full value of that significant, those two significant investments in the, in the, in the network. So the purpose of this chart really just shows, in the, in the AM, in the eastbound direction, year 2025, we have free-flow conditions through the city of Hampton. In the westbound direction, again, we're starting in the bottom here, we're moving up through the tunnel on the south side, we still have a little bit of a friction there, it's, you know, just typical motorist behavior, but we're moving up through 664, on up the peninsula, again, free-flow conditions in both the general purpose and the hot, hot Now, in the PM, in the eastbound, same thing really for the city of Hampton, free-flow conditions, and you read these charts the same way, general purpose and hot, as we move in the eastbound direction, free-flow conditions all the way through the tunnel. So again, in the, in the PM, you're not seeing, you know, that congestion that we normally see as we approach the HRBT in the eastbound direction. Now, what we have found, and I don't want to dwell on this too much, but we still have some issues down here that are presenting themselves as a result of the 464 interchange, and that is something, we're developing a solution with the region on the long-range transportation plan to address that. In the westbound direction, 2025 PM, similar here. As we move westbound, what we do see is a little bit of friction generated, and this is, this is typical, it's really around those, those close maneuvers in the J. Clyde Morris intersection there, that tight cloverleaf. But in general, we'll have free-flow conditions throughout the network on the peninsula. Now, this chart just kind of shows, as we progressed through the various scenarios that we looked at, and I think one of the important pieces here to show is, when we started with the base case, and that was, as we have planned to deliver the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel as, as designed, and a high-rise bridge without any other network improvements, other than what we already have in the reversible network, this is what we would see in the year 2025. Now, I would just like to say, you know, we still see that congestion generating as you approach the tunnel. If this were 2025 without the tunnel, this would be black. So we still have capacity improvements, obviously, we're making that investment, but the point here is with, with modest increases in, in the network and changes, we can get the real utility out of all those large investments we're making to, to provide a reliable system well into the future. This, this graph just shows, if we were to move the entrance point of the hot network from around the area of Settlers Landing, a little bit further to the east, and this is in the eastbound direction, we would see some improvement in congestion, but there's, you know, there's still congestion there, and, you know, potential for impacts on the city of Hampton arterials. But when we introduce, as I walked you through that network, when we introduce the widening in those, that four-lane cross-section in the eastbound and westbound direction, we completely eliminate that congestion as we approach the tunnel. Now, this just shows you, this is that simulation that I referenced, just shows you what, what the actual model, the micro-model, looks like, 2025 peak period, as we're approaching the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel from the east direction. And we're moving through the Mercury Interchange here. And we're going to, we have an open, an open system right now, again, what I talked about, where motors can merge and diverge in and out of the hot network at this point. And then as we get closer to 664, you see the solid white line pick up there on the left shoulder. Now that system closes back up again, and you, you know, we're starting to normalize traffic as we go into that, that area that has always caused this issue here in Hampton. So we've got normalized traffic, again, in the closed hot network to the left there. We're moving, approaching LaSalle here. As we come through the LaSalle intersection, now we're approaching Riprap. And then just beyond Riprap, we'll see where we open it up to those, that additional entrance to the system, and we open it up to a four-lane cross-section, right here, basically the center of the screen there. Now we have two lanes in the hot system, two lanes in the general purpose, in both directions, moving east and westbound. Again, this is the peak, peak period traffic model for the year 2025. Now we're approaching Settlers Landing, over Settlers Landing, as we approach the, the Now, this is, again, a closed network now, all the way through the tunnel until you approach 564 on the, on the opposite side of the water. And this just shows, you know, again, we have a, we have a reliable solution there in the, in the hot network, in that optimal, optimal case, really, in all of those cases, as we looked at, at the base case, all the way through our proposed case, our, our hot system performed well through the hotspot here in Hampton. Now, as, as Mr. Crum talked about, some of the things we're looking at next, again, this is, as the region looks at different options, you know, what are the tolling regimes, how do you operate that system, hours of operation, various options on the network itself, those are all decisions yet to be determined by the, by the region. And then, of course, as we look forward on the, the financing plan for how we would look to, to make these improvements. So those are things that, as a region, we're looking at, and again, as VDOT supports the region, really looking to provide them the best options from a technical standpoint on, on how we, we deliver these improvements, again, to the Hampton Roads region. So unless you have any questions, that concludes my presentation, sir.
Any questions from members of council? Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question, Mr. Hall, which relates to the interchanges at Merk, excuse me, at LaSalle, and then the proposal, or the thought that we might look at a new interchange maybe related there at Riprap Road and King. Has there been discussion about remodeling those interchanges as part of this engineering?
Not yet. We have had some discussions with the city, I think specifically on a, on a King Street interchange. Those are, those are obviously things we can always consider in the future. We're in sort of the preliminary discussions with Federal Highway on how we would look at that entire area, because we really have to look at a series of interchanges through that reach and how that would all be orchestrated, but to your point, ma'am, yes, that's certainly something we can and will look at if, if it's the region's desire, so.
If I may add to that, so both of those projects have been incorporated into our regional long-range plan. They're represented as a study to look at both of those interchanges. I know we've been working with Mr. DiProprio on that. Our goal now is, we've got to try to get that moved up in the ranking, to find the money to be able to get in the projects, to take a look at exactly what, what you're mentioning. So the first step is there, we have it in the plan, we've got to find the money now to do the studies.
Thank you, Beth.
Just one observation that was, came up on last Thursday that wasn't included, was that there's a possibility, there won't be four lanes westbound coming out of the tunnel, or, at the point that, there'll be four lanes coming out of the tunnel, but there may not be four lanes from Mallory all the way up to about 264 mile marker, where you pick up the fourth lane, only because you may be constrained by right-of-way and a need to try and, you know, you've got the golf course that you might infringe upon, and also the cost of possibly widening the bridges, or constructing new bridges on the westbound side. So it's just something just for the council members to consider that wasn't presented here.
Yeah, and Mayor, I can address, we're, we've been asked, the commissioners asked us to look at, and certainly, the idea is not to, to in any way degrade the performance from the current proposed scenario that we have, but we're, now we're looking at, how do we minimize impacts to the Hampton bridges and other impacts within the corridor in terms of, you know, a cost perspective?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for the presentation.
The second item on our